Okay. Okay, probably should have had handouts and I didn't. So, my name is Leo Foley, I'm the Dean Strang Kim's engineer. So this project is on the CIP and it's a combination of what they call the Rainbow Drive project and Max and Ave. So it's from the county road at Rainbow all the way to the city limits, which are at the end of Dutton Park. So what we did is we looked at four options. And what I did on a left-hand column was I said the CIP construction estimate. So it's all the same, $2 million. If you add those two projects, the construction cost for that project, for both those projects together was $2 million. So then we looked at the different alternatives, mainly knowing we were gonna do complete reconstruction in Concrete Street. That was kind of what was in the original estimate, eight inches of concrete. We were looking at 26 feet back to back, or back of curb to back of curb. And then alternate one, what we looked at basically was no sidewalk and no trail. So similar road to what it is now. And what are those costs? And we wanted to make sure that we knew what those costs were. Things we knew that if you do that, you don't have to extend culverts. If you do that, you don't have a lot of the driveway problems that you might end up with. But you don't get a nice sidewalk, you don't get a trail. So what was that type of a cost? And the current engineer's estimate for that is about $794,000. And what I will do is kind of go through these kind of quickly after we get done with the cost part. And there's always stormwater problems on that, on the project. So there is $78,000 in stormwater. Reason we kind of broke it up for those estimates to make sure you have certain utilities that pay for stormwater, sanitary and water. In that case, we weren't doing anything with the water, we weren't doing anything with the sanitary. The next option was option alternate two. And now we, on the south side of the road, we put a five-foot sidewalk. Traditional, normal, five-foot ADA accessible sidewalk on the south side, the solid, basically that have all the houses now. That estimate came up to about 1.14 million. You can see the stormwater went up a little bit because we've got to extend the culvert. Big culvert, big box culverts that are out of concrete. And you gotta do, and there's water main under some of that. So now it became a water main. If you're gonna tear it up, you might as well do the water. That was alternate two. Alternate three, basically the same thing. Now, instead of doing a sidewalk, we moved to the south side of the road where the new subdivision is being and all that, same side is done. And we put a 10-foot trail that would go all along. And you've got a nice big right-of-way. Even though there's a big ditch and there's trees, you still, the city owns a nice big right-of-way there. So that 10-foot trail, as long as you extend the box, do some other things, it fits in pretty nicely. And we wanted to see what these costs were. A lot of times when we're originally doing this, we're just doing costs based on typical projects that we've done in this city or other cities close by, and we get the cost. Now, we've actually surveyed it. This, these are real numbers, these are quantities. Lee has that spreadsheet too to break that all down. I don't want to go into that type of detail, but I just wanted you to know that these are no longer what we would call planning level, they're preliminary design level costs, which means they're pretty good costs. And so that 1.43 is still below that $2 million. And then the final one was to take a look at the sidewalk on one side, the south side, and then a 10-foot trail. And see what those costs came out to be. In that one, now you're extending the, you're extending the box culverts on both sides of the road. You're taking care of the water main. There's water main and sewer on the east end of that project. And probably need to be, if you're gonna do this kind of a big thing, we usually in this city have looked at, if you're gonna tear up the road, you might as well do the sanitary and the water main. So that's what alternate four shows. And it shows still, we're at about $1.8 million. And that 1.8 includes these other numbers, the 155,000 for stormwater, the 200,000 for sanitary, and then 100,000 for sanitary and 96,000 for water main. So to me, that gets you everything you'd want to do. What V and K thinks is we need to get a decision. We need to figure out, it has to be tonight, but very quickly, which one of these alternates do we want to go to final design? Which one do we want to go up for bid with? Because there's a lot more detailed design, all the ADA, everything that goes along with this has not been done yet. We've surveyed it, we got preliminary design. So Lee, would you now go to, I think I have one that says alternate designs. Alternate layouts, thank you. Not gonna kill you guys with too, too much detail here, but all of them are kind of the same. They show a typical cross-section. That cross-section, we basically didn't change what the width of the pavement was gonna be, but we did add sidewalks, trails as we talked about. So this one is that first one, no sidewalk, no trail. Can you go to the next? I do. So, so as you can see, we started on this one.
Yeah, two photos from Mitch.
There you go. There's four drawings for each drawing, so you were at the right spot. Now you're at alternate two. So let's go back and let's just go right through, go back, go back to alternate one.
You're with me because I don't have my mouse.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay, so here, like, like we talked about, we're starting down here at the county road and going that way, basically taking, and they'll be tweaking because now all those, the driveways, things like that, we have to make sure that we match in. There's a lot of, we planned on curb and gutter. Right now, there's no curb and gutter on that road. So we were gonna make that with eight inches of base, so, because we think of this road as a pretty high-use road, almost like a farm-to-market road. It's not necessarily viewed as a farm-to-market road in the planning documents, but it certainly gets a lot of truck traffic. We think it would be a good design. We also know down at the bottom end of this drawing, the bottom end, the east end, where Max and Ave comes in right now, isn't, isn't a good fit. It's not a safe way to put those roads together. So you can see, we put a bump out end. And we did that on all of them, just to kind of make it so Maxon comes down and you basically stop and have to turn to get on there. And we think that's a safer way, make sure everybody gets, gets in there. So that's kind of a base design. Can you go to the next one?
That is two, right there.
That's two, go to three. Right there. No, that's not, that's two. Yep. Okay, so you're in alternate two now. Okay, so alternate two.
Nope, you're in alternate three.
You went three or two?
I think you were talking one and we were on two.
I was talking one. Go back to two. Go back to that first one, that two. So right there, any one of them, two, stop. Just pull that up just a little bit. You can see now, south side, there's a sidewalk. There's nothing on the north side. That's really the big difference. Almost everything else, the end treatment was about the same. You can see here, in almost all the alternative, we put a sidewalk in to match this sidewalk, no matter, whenever we did almost any, anything as far as extended here. That's what we tried to do. I'll go to the next, can you just go to the next one? Our electric person's here. You can see here, we've got relocate power poles, depending on which option we go with, what gets done. So that's kind of where we're at on, on this one. So this is alternate two with the sidewalk. You can see here, we brought the sidewalk, we bring it across, bring it down this way. We would connect here and then go to there. In final design, would I really want to go all the way to the city limit? I might want to stop here, I might want to stop here. Those are things we can talk about later. But for now, this is what we have. All right, so now go to the next. The next one's alternate three. So this one, we took the sidewalk off completely. And, and a lot of these, we can mix and match, we were just doing things so we could see what the cost would end up being. Now we put a 10-foot trail on this side. If you've been out there and looked at it, it's a heck of a lot easier on paper than it is when you do it. There's a very, very large ditch, there's lots of trees, you're gonna lose a lot of trees in that area. We did not add trees back in. Because I think there's a ton of trees out there, some you're gonna lose. Of course, we've got them measured here, you can see 46, 50. If we end up going with those, we have to go cautious to remove those trees. Lot of times, cities will say, okay, now, if you're gonna remove that many trees, we want to put that many trees back here. We haven't done that, but again, that's kind of a final design type thing. I'd recommend it. I'm not gonna kill you on where are we going with trees right now. I want to get the big picture of alternatives. So again, this is, this is keeping the trail on that side. Eventually, I think this subdivision that's gonna be in here could have a trail that would come up and touch that trail. There's all kinds of other potential in the future. I think a trail is a smart move for the future. I think it would get used. We do a ton of trails anymore for almost every city we work for. Particularly, we've done Burlington, we've done Dubuque, we've done Davinport recently. We've done West Liberty in the past. And a lot of times, people think, oh, these trails won't get used that much. What we're finding out, they get used way more than we think they're gonna get used. So this is a 10-foot wide trail because we think a 10-foot drive, with your park right here, we think a 10-foot wide trail is a minimum size that I would want to put. Next one. Keep going, keep going. Let's go to alternate four, which maybe give you more pictures here. Because this is the one, alternate four, and I probably should have done this earlier, but I'll do it. I got alternate four, just so you have something so you can look for. That's 10 of these. You have. What's that? I've just got 10 right now, but I would want to, I'll kind of walk through again. Alternate four has everything that we, we thought, other than kind of a big landscape plan, which isn't off my radar for where we're going in this one. But what it does show you, and I wanted to be clear on two things. So that everybody sees this. One thing you'll notice on here are some big blue dots. Like because I'm getting old and having troubles with seeing things. But right-of-way is always important. People are putting things in the city right-of-way, it happens on every city. So I tell them all the time, load those right-of-way pins up. So everybody can see where the right-of-way is. So as you can see on this, these red line here and the red line here are the right-of-way lines. We are within the right-of-way. But as you get down toward Max and Ave, you are definitely gonna be impacting people's landscaping. A lot of impact on some of their landscaping. What we normally do is if they have landscaping, we try to basically put it back the way it was. I don't think all cities have to do that, but it's kind of what we try to do. We don't go above and beyond, we don't try to do crazy things, but if, if, if they have plantings there and we're gonna tear the plantings out, we usually try to put them back in. It's again, city's decision on what to do, and we can get to that when we get to, to, to final design. This one has the sidewalk on the south side, the entire way, and it has the 10-foot trail on the north side, and it, excuse me? Okay, and it shows you down here, kind of the same treatment down here, where we've turned Maxon. We've taken the trail and brought it in and connected to this trail. The sidewalk, all ADA accessible, comes across the road, comes here, and we, we went to the end of the thing. Know if I do that, but at one time, I saw plaques or plans for something out here. So with that thought, I would bring it there, you know, so those are the kind of things we think we should do. So our plan shows you going all the way. I think since you're below budget, this is the one I would recommend, but I don't want to force that issue. Well, for any questions?
Was the end of that our line? That's before, that's west of the bridge, right? That's before that bridge?
That is west of the bridge.
That's way west of the bridge.
Okay.
Yeah. It is, it should show up better. Dutton, so, so this is your tennis courts right here.
Okay.
This is Dutton, this is the entrance to Dutton. So it's beyond Dutton, beyond Dutton, beyond what, what this shows to cut out of the park.
Your numbers reflect the cost, the ones it's gonna cost to redo the power line?
I should have known you were here.
So your numbers aren't true numbers then?
Yeah, we can come up with that very quickly. There is a number in the CIP for that. You know what that number was? It was provided by your consultant, right, BH whatever. So we, we, we aren't electrical engineers, we didn't come up with that, but BH did come up with that estimate early on. I want to think it was 100 grand, not positive.
I'm not gonna say.
I think it was like 85 to 100.
85 to 100.
Somewhere around there.
And it is in the budget, it is in the, it is in the budget. It is not necessarily in this plan.
In the 2, in the 2 million?
It is, it is not in the 2 million, but it is in your CIP in another column for electric.
It comes out of the electric budget, not out of this project budget.
Correct. So, so that, that is a good point. And depending on what we do, that 100,000, what that 100,000 was, was for relocation. Assuming you were gonna do something where we had to relocate. Things that we've done a little bit different than a lot of projects. And I have so much right-of-way here, I believe we're gonna really try to keep a ditch. Here's gonna be the trail, we keep a ditch on this side. So we could curb and gutter and try to drain through into the ditch and then, and then the way it normally flows. And that's a little bit different, you don't have to have storm sewers on each side. We save quite a bit of money doing that, and we think it's gonna work pretty well. We do have to extend your culverts, and the culverts are...
Just real quick, you, would that impact the housing addition for folks to go in there? If it drains down into that ditch?
No, because the ditch currently is there. The ditch currently drains that flow to here and then that way. So I think it should be, it should be good. Yeah, I think if you look, oh, the one I handed out talks about those culverts. So one of them is a seven-foot by six-foot culvert. Adam, I was gonna ask you, I'm kinda putting you on the spot. You ever been down inside those culverts or looked in there?
No.
Unfortunately, neither have I. I, my surveyor tells me they're in really good condition. He thinks they're old. His words, not mine. "They were constructed before they started making concrete cheaper," is what he told me. And he said, "When you look down there, you can tell that they're in really good condition for the age of." But that's why we thought, a lot of times, we might have to go in and do some kind of little repair. He didn't think so, he's gonna check them again tomorrow, because I told him I was gonna talk to council tonight, and he's like, "Oh, man, I'd like to check one more time before..." So I'll have pictures and all that tomorrow to be sure. But we've got a pretty heavy cost on extending them. They have wing walls on them, they're really nicely done. So our thoughts were, there's no reason to do them any less than what they are. They're functioning very well, and let's keep that up. I have not talked to any neighbors in an official manner. Of course, when we're out surveying, we get a lot of help. People asking all kinds of questions on, "What do you do?" "Are you gonna put a trail? Are you gonna put a sidewalk?" Some want a trail, some don't want a sidewalk. So I'm gonna say, put all, everything on one side versus the other side. These are, almost every project we do, we run into that same type of thing.
The only thing I heard from was this owner, this owner here was adamant about having their landscaping put back the way it was, because they have, they have quite a bit of landscaping, I think, in the right-of-way.
They do, yeah, they do. And, and to be honest, a lot of cities do put it back, similar to what they do. But I will tell you this, not all, not all. I want them, I happen to live in Bethany, though. They're probably more on the other side of the fence. You shouldn't have put it there anyway, and we'll do what we want, it's our way.
And then just, you know, again, I explained to them that, you know, we would have, like, you know, once this went to more of a public meeting.
And that was, that's one of my questions here too, is before we make a decision, do we want to have a public meeting? Do we want to try to make a decision to go with a particular alternate? And then say, okay, this is the alternate we're gonna go with. Now, we'd like to get public input on what, what kind of things should we be worried about? What are we gonna do as we get to final design? Because there's all kinds of tweaks we could do in final design. But that's another, you know, that's the next, the next steps. Other than this end of it, we didn't think there was too many conflicts with, with, with people's, you know, like, people put burn piles and things like that, but not expensive type things, except when you get down there. And even those type of things, I think he's got a type of concrete that might be different than what we have. When you end up getting through it, it's not a, it's not a huge cost.
I just, and again, I just, I think it's more, it's just the things they have there in plants and things like that, or
I think, I do just an absolute ton of these kind of projects. And it seems like whatever, I don't put a sidewalk in, years later, it comes back and bites me for one reason or another. Somebody wanted it, why didn't you put it in, that type of thing. The trail's another story. Some people, you know, the trails, it adds expense, is it worth putting it in? Doesn't do anything. Since you have Dutton Park right there, I just think it's a, it's a no-brainer to me that it would be, get used. And I have a feeling, from what I've seen in the past, that this part of West Liberty eventually, somehow, some way...
So we're in our conference of, going north.
Right.
So with this schematic, you've got the trail on the north side and cycle to the south side?
Correct.
Well, I mean, I'd like to see the all-inclusive financials before, and that would include electric. I think we need to have everything mapped out, if I feel, before I make a decision, I'd like to know the expenses.
The electric was 170 total.
Back in the CIP.
100,000 for Rainbow and 70,000 for next.
Even now?
Was the estimate.
Even now?
That we gave late last year.
Oh, late last year.
And it was, it was part of the CIP, and it was put in the electric budget for this year, you know, next year.
So we just have that added in, so?
No, I could add it in, but normally, what, what, again, and I will do that, there's no problem. What I would do though is probably separate it, because what I'm giving you is when, when I go up for bids, what will the bid cost be, you know what I mean?
You're, yeah, because there would be a difference between, you know, what we're, what our debt would look like from a general obligation, and what would take into that? Would it be property tax to electric, sewer, you know, water? How is it, I mean, that's something that, if you remember, Northland Financial come back, based on what your decision is, and then they break down that debt based on those, those pieces. So, but I think what I hear you also saying here is though, just to have the big picture and say, yeah.
I can add one, I can add...
Just to be simplistic for that.
I can add a call, because this spreadsheet right there that, that she has, and I should have backed that up. It shows you there the total cost, and then it shows you broken down by the utilities.
Right, right, right.
I could put electric utility there also. And that's not a...
It's just a good reference, so that I know what the extent of the project is, or what part, or...
And, and what we did is we sent, when we first did the, kind of a schematic of this, we talked to BH about what would those costs be. So they're kind of ballpark costs. They now would want to see this, and they'd probably come back and refine. I don't know whether they'd be up or down, you just don't know.
Okay. And I know we did receive, when we were discussing this during our CIP planning, when we did receive communication from Simpson Memorial Home and their engineers as well, because I know, I mean, I don't know where they're at now, but I know that they were in some planning stages, and they really wanted to be a part of the discussion, not just with the road, but the sidewalk, because they have a very active community.
Yeah.
And that was just something that they wanted to be a part of the discussion, was the, was the sidewalk or trail. Meeting would be essential for that.
Another part of that is that if Simpson does go in out there, where that line ends for three-base electricity, that line will actually need to be extended out for Simpson Home to get, to get power. So I really doubt that that's probably in BH and G's estimate.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just due to the fact...
I'm certain it's not.
Due to the fact for city expansion, like that.
Right.
Because I'm, I'm pretty sure it's not, but I mean...
It's probably for existing structure.
That's what they're for, existing.
I think if you're gonna, you're gonna end up doing this, the council has to think about for, alternative for it, for a couple of reasons to do the sidewalk. When you do that is, you already have contractors there doing the work, so you don't have a separate cost later on, if in a couple of years you want to put the sidewalk. And number two, it's gonna make it more look like a neighborhood between the houses on the south side and the houses in the new subdivision starting to be built. It more looks like a neighborhood instead of a county road. So.
But that, I do see one problem.
Yes.
Well, Diane's gonna be upset you didn't put a roundabout in there.
Well, I don't...
Well, there's a bump out there, that's kind of a little bit...
There is a bump out here, and I did think about one here, there's really not enough room. I will tell you this, we had a council member, you probably remember years ago, that wanted a...
Yes, roundabout.
Mr. Rock's not here, we're taking his house out. I never wanted to, but they wanted a roundabout here with sidewalks around the roundabout, which would...
And where's the street for BISI subdivision coming into this?
It's coming in, so, so not quite straight across from but like right in that...
Oh, they were talking to...
They, they were talking to.
They originally were talking to, you're correct, one in and one out.
Yes, I think they still are. I haven't seen the last result, but I've seen one with a one in, one out. And then we're like here and here.
Will there be anything at Garfield?
No, not on the Garfield.
And I haven't seen, he had a trail in his at one time too, but I haven't seen that trail.
He did, they, they have that, they have an option of trail or money to...
Right, and I don't, I don't know if they were coming this way, because you remember, at one time, we talked about a trail down Maverick Creek.
And his was, his was north.
Okay.
The last I seen.
Again, in line with the conference of plan to eventually connect, but the other part was to connect over to Dutton, possibly north. Yeah. Well, I like this view, only because this road, I mean, may not seem like it's heavily traveled or more of a residential, but I think it is, only because this is a thoroughfare to Highway 6.
It's a thoroughfare to Highway 6.
Yeah, it cuts right through.
Go on a Saturday in May.
Yeah, oh, to Dutton, of course.
Practice anytime, kind of return summer.
It's probably gonna surprise us how much it's traveled, even, even if it's gravel.
Yeah, I, I, there's not many roads in this city that are park service. Yeah, I I, there's not many roads in this city that are park surface. Places this one is, and that's, that's a problem.
And I know that's an impact as well, you know, with our park and recreation, um you know, they, they're. A lot of activities scheduled and as far as timeline goes, you know, those are things that we would. Definitely gotta have a discussion about, um cuz Nick usually has. Everything is usually packed out there, so it's. Good mortgage.
Leo and I kinda had that conversation with the fact that if the Boise subdivision takes off, Casey Bell's property, and then with Nick's stuff, you know, we're gonna have to keep. A lane of traffic over at all times.
Yeah, if you're gonna allow for parking there at all, off-street parking.
Allow to have traffic allowed, at least one direction.
And and that's, that makes.
And that's doable.
That ma- that makes for difficult construction a little longer, but do it, I mean, we do it again all the time. Our goal was to try to get this under construction, spring, summer, this next year. That that's the kind of the way the plan was laid out.
And that was also indicated in the CIP because you, you had updated that.
Right.
And we have the most recent update.
So when we, I guess I would like to know if maybe. The next couple of weeks, if we could get a decision on going forward or. Is there enough that we can start on design on this and then have a public meeting, uh do you want? Wanna do something quickly on a public tech meeting? Maybe a little bit, the only trouble I have with public meetings a lot of times is people want information, they don't want nothing. You know what I mean, so we're, we're to the point now where we have a lot of information for them. And and that's when I wanna have a public meeting, something where I can give them, so they can tangibly get there, otherwise. You're hearing what if, what if, what if, and it just doesn't, doesn't. Doesn't add as much, right now, I think we're in a position where they add a lot of, a lot of value to get some public input.
Leo and I met a few weeks ago, I told him, based on experience I've had doing projects like this. Three's the minimum, four is what you really want, I mean, if if you don't put the sidewalk in now, you're 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 gonna regret it.
Yeah.
True. And it'll come back and it's gonna cost you twice as much to put the sidewalk in the next year.
And they've, yeah, and they've heard that with other developments, I know a lot of them have been a part of those discussions where. Sidewalks didn't go in and it's. And now we're talking about.
And we're gonna have to make sure as we go forward that walks are, because I mean, with the population, more people are riding bikes, walking. Doing those things, and we need to be able to provide.
Especially, especially if it's multi, multi-use housing, multi-housing.
Yeah.
When you got families there, I mean, I certainly don't want people walking in the street, you know, or. Those hover rounds riding down in the middle of the lane.
And that that is one reason that when you have a sidewalk on this side, then we can make really good, safe passages across to the other side.
To to get the position.
And again, with your strategic planning and the comprehensive, that was one of the big things was connecting out to Dutton. To allow, you know, uh folks to be able to walk from town.
Will that road be that?
You know, that's. I I don't know what this city does as far as lighting, most of the roads we've done already had lighting on them. Do you know, is there any type of ordinance or anything like that on on lighting? Usually.
Not necessarily, but that would be figured into your projects, yes.
Is this um?
You're gonna want to, if you're gonna put a path out there, you're gonna want that lit. Just for safety purposes.
And this is West Liberty's, I just need to make sure, this is West Liberty's. Utility. Yeah, so we can put whatever kind of lighting we want on there. And we do, I don't have that figured in here either, but we do have. Still kept that contingency pretty high, but we still have fifteen percent of contingency in here for those kind of things. No, I'd like to put lighting on, like I like.
I wonder if we could sort of um capture another group to help with some of that trail, trail lighting. I wonder if that would be a possibility to to get some, another like Heritage Foundation or the Trails. Committee or whatever on board, because I know for the existing trail between. The Depot and up, I think either the Rotary Club or the Heritage Foundation, can they put the lighting?
Must go light, donate lighting.
The, I, the, if you've ever been out there, it is not well lit.
It's not well lit.
It's not, it's not lighting.
But they're.
Needs to be professional.
Oh.
Where where are you talking about?
The the current.
We had a Heritage Foundation or what reason to put on the existing trail, there's some solar ones up.
Yes.
And it's just, it's not well lit.
No, I I don't think it's a.
It's a good, it's a good pod, they, you know, try to.
Since we do have electric right there, I don't think lighting would be a big problem at all, because you're gonna be excavating anyway. Yeah, I always forget, there are, there are other towns where if it's not your utility, they have like a. If you do a subdivision, they'll put a base light, you know what I mean? And then, and then if you, the cities want, they operate the lights apart. But what we have done before is put some bigger lighting on like ends and in the middle or something, and then put like other type of. Kind of accent lighting along. I did the Muscatine Trail, we ended up putting water on that, like a water fountain type. You have anything like that on uh the park? Those are, those are type of things during final design, we definitely like to talk about. Are there things in the park type area that might make sense, you know, people biking there? Maybe you put a, one of those like a stopping area right when you get to the park, if you put like a. A gazebo type of thing that, I just did this. There.
Like a minimal trailhead type.
A trailhead where they come up and they say, oh, here's a park, here's how far it is to go here and there, this is, you know. Wanna play pickleball, here's pickleball, here's soccer, that type of thing. And and there are grants that we could start looking for for that kind of thing.
And they do have that with them.
There's a number of different ones, that what what people want is a grant to pay for the whole thing, and that almost never happens, it's really hard to do. But what are easier to pick off, some smaller grants to complement.
Are we at at least a year out before we get the master park plan? Back or?
Sixteen months.
Sixteen months.
Leo, are we talking about all these trees coming down?
Not all of them, but a lot of them, yes, not every one.
I would, those trees that are up towards the, we're about acres, those are just nasty.
Those are gonna come up.
Yeah, I know, that's a, yeah, that's like, okay, so Brad's taking them out anyways, they are terrible.
Yeah, so they're big.
They've been unmaintained forever, they're just, you know.
Are they junk trees or are they?
Uh the cover might be a couple of oaks, but I mean, no one's maintaining them, they're, they're old, they're, you know, limbs are always falling off of them.
But and that, and that's another, if you take out twenty bad trees that are. More or less scrap, scrub trees, and then put in five really nice trees.
That was a fence line there before.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
A lot of doubt, I doubt anyone actually planted those.
Those are actually coming out due to the power line that's there. It runs right in that area, when I talked to Brad Eggers about it. When he was talking about that subdivision out there.
Has Brad given us a final?
Spoke to him about moving those trees.
He's gotta put his numbers together for, I think.
Knew he was working on it, I didn't know that. But I think this will complement what he's doing quite well.
Um can I, how long does that stretch?
Oh.
Sixteen seventy-four. Is that what that says? Seventy-four and seventy-one, I can't fill.
Is that thirty-one?
Thirty-one plus zero, zero?
Here's thirty-four.
Thirty-four plus zero, zero?
Yeah.
All right, how about on this? Zero or is it?
That's a ten.
Ten, so twenty-four, twenty-four hundred feet. Not quite half a mile, but close to half a mile.
It adds to our point eight that we already have at least in town, so it's progress.
We're moving in the right direction.
Yep.
For for point eight, for what?
The trail.
The trail?
Give or take whatever.
Yeah, and like I said, this is just to get us started, I would like to have another, you know, a meeting and discuss details about it. If you really wanna do the trail, there's things we could really do that. Maybe, maybe enhance things, I'd be more than happy to work with Brad on what he's doing and try to, try to complement each other. But this is a, this is the point we're at right now. Once we get a corridor done in our CAD system. That gives us quantities, we can come up, we can move things around, we can get new quantities, new costs very quickly. But once we have to go to final design, there's a lot of little details that have to happen to get this to be a big project. All of a sudden, every little, every little driveway and how do we match that driveway, how far up to the driveway do we have to go? Make sure that everything meets, how does a trail access to the road, ADA? How do we get water from the road to the ditch? Those are all the things we're, we're kind of. Chomping at the bit, am I ready to get rolling?
And ideally, if you hit this out of the bit by the end of February, you're you're gonna get your best price.
You already told me that, and to be honest with you, you're pushing us, you're really pushing us, and we can get a decision tonight.
Even in early March, we're still.
I think early March is a little more.
But if, but if we're in April or May.
Yeah.
We're not gonna get very close.
We're too late.
It depends, this year was a bad year already because. Everybody was so busy to try to.
Catch up.
Catch up and then.
Yeah.
Some money got flooded early in the year.
But this is a good sized project, so I think the earlier that we can get it out, the better price.
You will, you'll you'll get a, and 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 to be straight up with you. It is not an easy project, but it's far enough outside of like the city proper. It's not, it's not a downtown project that that they really have as many problems with, so I I think it'll be good next. I know one bidder would be very. Would be very interested in this thought. But I, but I have a feeling you'd have eight or eight or, eight or so bidders.
Did you say four or four hundred feet?
Yes. But the the bigger the project, usually the better bid climate you have. And you know, unless you get too big, but this is, this is probably right in the wheelhouse for a lot of local type contractors.
Okay, any other questions for Leo?
Is this something we can put on the agenda for next, if we get the, kind of the, everything lined up? For the next meeting, I mean, I don't know, is this something we can put on the agenda for next council meeting?
Yeah, all the information out to all the new counselors and.
So what I'll do is I'll update this spreadsheet and send it out to everybody, and it'll have an electric utility line on there. Probably be a little contingency on that item too. Yeah, I can, I can reduce numbers to.
It's on the January.
Okay, anything else? Let's go ahead and adjourn, and we have fifteen minutes to the council meeting.